Good evening. The Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Board of Trustees is now convened in a board work session on Thursday, November 10, 2022, at 6:00 PM in the boardroom of Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Instructional Support Center located at 10300 Jones Road, Houston, Texas, for the purpose of reviewing that portion of the Monday, November 14, 2022, regular board meeting agenda designated as action items and to hear designated reports and recognitions posted in the meeting notice as required by Texas law. I want to welcome the members of our audience and our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Cypress Fairbanks Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. Audience members may not participate in the meeting outside the designated agenda items for citizen participation or public comment. Disruption of the meeting by any person, including the audience, is inappropriate and will be addressed by the board president or the board's counsel as a meeting parliamentarian. Continued or repeated disruption of any board meeting by words or actions may result in loss of privilege to attend the meeting. Prior to this meeting, board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda, agenda items that will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. During the course of this meeting, the board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting, as permitted by Sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on Comcast Channel 16 and the district website. There will also be available as video on demand on the district website following tonight's meeting. For the video to adequately reflect the proceedings, I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. This evening, we do not have scouts or Girl Scouts present, and sadly, no elected officials this evening to be recognized in the audience. The invocation, Pledge of Allegiance, Vision, and Mission Statement, Remarks and Recognitions, Board Comments, Discussion, and Citizen Participation portions of the agenda will be presented at the regular board meeting on Monday, November 14, 2022. At each open meeting of the board, patrons who have registered in accordance with the procedures established by BED regulation may address the board during the designated agenda comments period prior to the board's consideration or action on the item. Patrons wishing to comment on more than one agenda item must complete a separate agenda comment request form for each item. Unless the agenda is otherwise rearranged by the board president during the meeting, agenda comments will generally be taken prior to each agenda item. Agenda comments will generally be taken prior to each agenda item. Also, in accordance with procedures established by BED regulation, patrons may address the board during citizen participation on any matters of interest or concern that are not posted agenda items. Individuals may only register to speak one time per meeting under citizen participation. Unless the agenda is otherwise rearranged by the board president during the meeting, citizen participation will generally be held after reports and action items. In order to participate in agenda comments and/or citizen participation, patrons must sign up using the designated registration form link posted in the meeting agenda on the district's website, beginning when the meeting agenda is posted through 12:00 PM on the day of the meeting. The registration form must be completed in full, and each patron must be present at the meeting to make his or her own comments during the designated time for agenda comments and/or citizen participation to be eligible to speak. Any registered speaker who is absent from the meeting at the time for agenda comments and/or citizen participation forfeits the opportunity to address the board at that meeting, but may submit written comments to the board. The board will now review the following action items. During review of the following action items, any board member may remove one or more of these items, at which time these items will be addressed and voted on individually. Item 3A, the board will consider approving the minutes of the October 10, 2022, regular board meeting. There are no speakers this evening on this topic. May we move this to the consent agenda, or do we have comments? Holly, if you would, consent agenda. The board will consider approving the budget amendments for the period July 1, 2022, through September 30, 2022. We have no speakers this evening. It's questions only, and let me look to the right. Questions? To the left?
I think we have a question, Tom.
Yes. Natalie?
I just had a question. A great job on the information, lots and lots of information, very thorough. I got to thinking that we've been about, it's been about a year that I'd served, and I just wondered, were there any contracts that haven't come through this current board at this point, anywhere maybe contracts at about the 400,000-plus mark? And it's not something you need to answer today, but I'd just like to know if there were any, so I'd see what those are, so that can be where the spending is.
Sure, I'll be glad to. I mean, I do not believe, because we have any, anything that's over, a single purchase that's over $250,000, we would, requires approval through the board. It would depend on the bid and how the bid was done and what it allowed as far as renewals. However, it would have gone through the board.
You're saying even the renewals would have come through the board?
No, the initial bid document would have come through the board, and it would depend on how that renewal was set up for it to renew. And for example, if it was monthly payments that we are making that are less than 250, and the particular agenda item allowed for the, for renewal, for like typically, it's three years, is typically for another year for three years, but it just depends on how the bid document was worded, then that, it might not be in that second year. However, if the expenditure is 250,000 or more, we're still in a single payment we're required to come to the board with that.
That's great. I think that's what I was interested in, was those that might have been, have automatic renewal in it. So that'd be great, just to know if it hadn't come through us in the 250,000 amount, if I could just know what was out there that way. Thank you.
Any other questions on item 3B? May we move this to consent agenda? Holly, if you would, please. Item 3C, the board will consider approving the district's 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and Single Audit Report, and accept the auditor's report on the district's general purpose financial statements and single audit for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2022. We do have a presentation this evening, Karen Smith and also Greg Peterson of Weaver and Tidwell.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Board members, tonight we will be reviewing the annual comprehensive annual financial report, as well as the federal single audit report, and then the audit report that was written by our auditors and the review that they performed. The Texas Education Code requires an annual audit of the district's financial statements. The Single Audit Act requires a review every year of our federal funds. The district prepares the annual comprehensive financial report in its entirety. So I would real quickly like to recognize before I go on Amanda Bowles, who's in the audience, as well as Mabel Isles, Melissa McIner, and Annette Pete, and their staff for their work, because although you have a report sitting in front of you, this is work that has happened all year long. In addition, I would like to recognize the Communications Department for the design of the cover of the report. They do an excellent job and make the report look so professional, and I appreciate it greatly. The annual financial report that we prepare, you have a choice, the Texas Education Agency requires an annual financial report, a basic annual financial report. The district chooses to prepare an annual comprehensive financial report, which is a lot more detail of what is required in that report. One of the areas that has a lot more detail is the statistical section, and that shows a lot of reports that have 10 years' worth of data in it, and is much more transparent for our taxpayers and is a better reflection of the district's financial results. This report is reviewed every single year by the Government Officers Finance Association, as well as the Association of School Business Officials, and we have received, or continue to receive, the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for this report. It's a very difficult report to prepare, and just to share with you about that, only 6% of the districts in Texas prepare this report. So I just want, and like I said, it has 10 years' worth of information, which is information that our bond rating agencies like to see whenever they are reviewing and giving us our ratings for our bonds. The primary statement that the district will share with you related to our annual financial report is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, because this reflects where our fund balance was at June 30 year-end, and it shows the effects of the operations of the districts on our fund balance. As of June 30, 2022, the General Fund, which is our main operating fund, statement of revenues and expenditures, and changes in fund balance reflected total revenues of $1.02 billion and total expenditures of $1.022 billion. You also see and hear that there was a transfer in of $1.45 million, and that reflects the fund balance from the community programs, which is in our enterprise fund. Any funds not needed for current year operations is transferred back into the general fund. The district's net change in fund balance is zero due to the offset of the general fund expenditures from our federal stimulus funds. The Governmental Accounting Standards Board often will release a new governmental accounting standards that we have to implement. One of those we had to implement this year, and it's the new accounting standard, GASBY 87, related to leases. And it was effective for fiscal years beginning after June 15, 2021, and it's a standard that establishes lease accounting criteria and based on saying that leases are really financing transactions that give us the right to use that asset. For example, a copier is a good example of that, we lease copiers, and it gives us the right to use that asset. The new standard requires that the lessee recognize a lease liability, which would be once again the copiers or something of that nature, and in a tangible right to use leased asset, and those are only reflected in the government-wide financial statements. It also requires the lessor, which is whenever we are actually receiving lease receivable payments, as well as the deferred inflow of resources in the financial statements. And for us, that example of that is our cell towers, where we receive revenue back from that, and then like you see in our parking lot, that we've got a few businesses that actually lease and provide us rent associated with that. The impact to the financial statements is immaterial, in fact, on the government-wide and then the governmental fund financial statements, is less than $200,000, so it's a very immaterial. So now I'd like to go over some of the general fund highlights impacting the general fund. Fund balance has remained the same, as I shared previously, as the prior year due to the federal stimulus funds to offset the general fund deficit. A total of 55 million of federal stimulus funds was used to offset the deficit in the general fund. General administration is 1.88% of total expenditures, which is less than the statewide average of 3.4%. In addition, the administrative cost ratio for the district was 3.79%, which is less than the Texas Education Agency threshold of 8.55% for school districts with more than 10,000 students. And we reported on that, if you recall, in our first Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas presentation that we did in October. Now I will turn it over to Greg Peterson, and he is going to go over the report, the opinion of the, on the financial statements, as well as the single audit report. Greg?
Thank you, Karen, and good evening, trustees. As Karen mentioned, my name is Greg Peterson. I'm the audit partner with Weaver. So the whole purpose of an audit is for the auditor to render an opinion on the financial statements. And I'm pleased to say that we are going to render, and we have rendered, an unmodified opinion on these financial statements, which is the highest level of assurance that you can receive in an audit. We performed our audit in accordance with general auditing standards, as well as government auditing standards, which requires us to not just look at the numbers, but we also have to obtain an understanding of the district's internal controls, and we test those internal controls. By obtaining this understanding, it helps us develop our audit procedures so that we can do a thorough audit. Through our evaluation of the district's internal controls, we did not identify any deficiencies in those internal controls that would require communication to governance, so that we did not have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses that would be required to be reported. In addition to rendering opinion on the financial statements, we are also required to conduct a federal single audit. Again, we will be rendering an unmodified opinion on our single audits. Those single audits are also conducted in accordance with government auditing standards and the uniform guidance. Once again, very similar to the financial statement audits, we also have to obtain an understanding of internal controls over compliance related to those federal programs, and then we also test compliance with those federal programs, just to ensure that the money is being used in the proper way that the federal agencies require. So the four programs that we performed a single audit were the Emergency Connectivity Fund, the Special Education Cluster, Title II, and ESER. And as you may have recalled from last year's presentation, so we have to rotate these programs, they're on a three-year rotation basis. They have to meet a certain expenditure threshold in order to be up for rotation. This year, the OMB identified several grants that are just automatically considered high risk and require audit. So that would be the Emergency Connectivity Fund and the ESER funds are identified as higher risk. And the reason they're identified as higher risk is because it's new federal funding, and a lot of it that's being, that's going out to districts, so they want to make sure that they're getting picked up and audited every year. So that's why you'll see ESER being a repeat program that we test. Same with ECF, where the Emergency Connectivity Fund will be another one that repeats as long as they keep identifying it as a high risk. But again, the overall results of the audit were great, fantastic. I mean, that's always what you want to hear, you want to hear those unmodified opinions. No findings related to internal controls. Karen, Mabel, Amanda, they do a great job, they provide us with all the information that we request, and it's a lot of information. As you can tell, it's, it's a big report, we ask a lot of questions, and they always give us the right answer. So they direct us very well, and I just want to say thank you for all y'all's efforts. And I'm happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
So as a predicate, some boards will have a separate audit committee. What we do here in CyFair is we are all on the same audit committee. So this is a meeting per se of the audit committee and review of the audited financials. So let me turn to the right. Scott, any questions? Natalie?
I don't have a question necessarily about the content of the audit. I do want to congratulate Karen, Mabel, and Amanda. I know that's a lot of work, and I'm, I'm sure you're happy to have a partner of their level of professionalism in that work. I guess that's more of a question about just in general, looking ahead to the finances of next year and seeing if we couldn't have maybe a Team of Eight workshop or something where we can really look in depth at the impact of what was presented here about the fund balance and the ESER and the long-term picture of the financial cliff that we're facing.
I would answer that and say, we've already had those discussions that we need to start the budget process earlier this next year. The, the big variable is always the legislative session, because sometimes it's June before we know what they've done, or what, what they've done to us or for us. But, you know, I've encouraged our legislators to maybe give a little indication, a little earlier on this year, so we can start that preparation, because it's not just CyFair, it's all school districts are going to be facing a fiscal cliff in the next couple of years. So absolutely, long, long answer to the question.
I love your answer. You know, so I have, most of the colleagues that I speak to out there have made decisions similar to ours, only a few didn't. But I think I'd like, I think we can influence that legislation, I think that's a goal. We have committees in the district that are set up to do it. So for me, having a deeper understanding early, maybe we can get out ahead of some of that as well, and encourage some action in Austin.
Gilbert?
Excellent report. I'm just asking, when you get the, the go, how long does this usually take your audit to?
So we come in, we perform some interim procedures, so we'll come in for about two weeks, and we'll do some interim procedures. That's when we obtain our understanding of internal controls, because we want to start that process early, because if we do have some type of deficiency that comes up, you know, we want to have time to kind of tailor our audit procedures to address that during final fieldwork. So we'll generally do two weeks of interim fieldwork, and then we'll come back out for final fieldwork, and that's typically anywhere between two to four weeks. It just depends on how many single audits we're going to be required to audit is really the primary factor, but typically between two to four weeks for final fieldwork, so six weeks all in all.
Within a two-month period, usually?
Let's hear, we start, well, yeah, basically, basically with, well, actually, it's over probably a three-month period. We come in and we do our interim procedures, and then we come back after fiscal close, typically about a month or two after fiscal close, about two months after fiscal close to do our final audit procedures.
Yeah, just better understanding for myself. Thank you.
And to my left, Luke?
I have some rookie questions. So just first, so you're listing off some programs that you focused upon, and you use the word rotation.
Yes.
Can you describe what you mean by this term rotation, please?
Absolutely. So I think everyone probably has a copy of the single audit report in front of them. If we go back to page...
It's actually, it was actually in the agenda support.
Okay. I'll just hold this up for reference, unless y'all have it on, on your laptops.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
So in the single audit report, on page six and seven, you have the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, and this lists all your major federal programs. So any major federal program over $3 million, which is y'all's threshold, requires to be audited every three years. So, so we rotate those programs to be audited every, every third year.
Okay.
Unless they're specifically identified as a high-risk program, in which case they would be audited every year.
And that leads me to my next question. When we talk about high risk, can you describe the why behind the high risk?
Yes, so the high risk specifically for a lot of this coronavirus relief funding is because it's, it's new funding. So the federal agencies want to make sure that those programs are being looked at, to make sure that the money is being used in accordance with the requirements of the program. So that's, that's primarily why they've been identified as high risk.
Understood. Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, and the high-risk determination is not made by the auditor, it's, it's made by the federal agencies.
Yeah, I figured, I figured. Thank you very much. All right. Mr. Jackson, I'm complete.
Thank you. Debbie?
No questions, but just congratulations to Karen and Amanda and Mabel and the team, because I think to have such a great audit for a school district of our size is really to be commended. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Julie?
The only question that I had, I'd already shared with Karen, is my request to have a hard copy. You know, 189 pages, it's hard to go through on your screen, right? But I did, and the information is extremely complete and thorough. There's a lot of detail that I think that, you know, many of our constituents and our community members would be very interested in. So I just want to confirm that this audit is on the district website.
That is correct. In fact, it's a requirement that it be posted on the district's website, and it'll be posted after board approval on Monday.
On Monday. Okay, great, thank you. I think that's really important in terms of financial transparency, that we provide this information to the public. The only other question I would have for, for the Weaver folks is, are there any concerns that you have? I mean, obviously, we got a very great audit report, but is there anything that you would want this board to be aware of, to look for the future, or any concerns that we just need to keep our eyes on?
You know, I think probably some of the biggest concerns right now would be regarding cybersecurity.
Okay.
That seems to be the biggest threat affecting districts at the moment. So making sure that you have a strong cybersecurity plan in place, policy, would probably be my number one recommendation for things to look out for.
Thank you very much. That's helpful. Thank you.
Well, yes, you knew I was going to have some questions. So first, you said that, Greg, you mentioned that, that in your audit, you, you looked at internal controls. Does that mean you don't look at every piece of paper? Do you have dollar limits when you test internal controls? What do you mean by that?
So when I say we're testing internal controls, what we're doing is we're looking at transaction cycles. So we want to know the complete process of a transaction, so particularly maybe the cash disbursement cycle that leads to recording of expenditures, which is obviously one of the biggest line items in the financial statements are your total expenditures. So we want to know the process from generation, approval, all the way through cutting the check. We want to know how that process works. And then we want to make sure that we've identified the key controls within that process that we can go in there and test. So if, if something's not getting the proper authorization or approval, maybe it's not being coded correctly, we can identify that, because it could lead to a reporting error. So, so we're looking at, at those types of things when we're looking at, at internal controls, and then from that process, we go and we test specific transactions. So we'll pull a sample from the total, let's say, cash disbursement register, and we'll go in there, we'll randomly select, or depending on how our sampling approach is, make selections and then test those transactions to make sure that they are properly approved, they're properly coded, they've gotten the proper authorization for the check amount. So all those little individual steps along the way, we go through and test.
So as part of that, would you be looking at wire transfers as, as well?
Wire transfers, yes.
Do you, you know, one approach is you, you do some type of sample, whether it's block sample or random sample, but then it's also fairly common that everything above a certain dollar amount, you take a look at. So did you employ that approach as well?
We typically, yes, we do, we do scope testing, so we, we'll calculate our materiality based on our, a formula of whatever it is we're going to be testing, and we'll come up with a scope limit, and for certain transactions or certain account balances, we will look at every single transaction over a certain dollar amount. And in addition to that, we will also sample. So we'll do a scope test and a sample, so that we're picking up items below scope that, you know, could potentially be misstated as well.
And of course, the reason why I asked about wire transfers is that was a, a fraud that was eventually found involving a school district in the greater Beaumont area.
Correct.
So I just wanted to make certain that, that we were in fact looking at wire transfers.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, sir.
A question I asked my rookie year, when you mentioned rookie questions, and it's amazing how these can, can change what a district does, and so the question I asked actually changed district policy. But, but the general question had to deal with accruals, and accruals are estimates. And so I don't know, Karen, if you want this, or if you want it, Greg, but briefly talk about what the largest accruals are that we're looking at, because that will, will highlight areas where you have less precision, because it's an estimate.
Absolutely.
Sure, I'll, I'll be glad to take that. The, for the main ones, we have the government-wide financial statements, which is the pension liability and the OPEB, as well as accrued interest. I mean, now we've got leases, but it's immaterial to the financial statements. And on the governmental fund side, on the revenue side, we have to do a state aid accrual for our state funding that we, we've earned but not yet received. And then on the expenditure side, it is our salary accrual, as well as construction associated with anything that we need to accrue in that cost into our financial statements.
So on the construction, and we're a big district, and we have a tremendous amount in construction dollars. When you did your audit, did you take a look at completion of construction to see if there might be unidentified liabilities?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. So we do that in a multitude of ways. The first way, probably the most simple, is, you know, the district prepares a schedule of construction in progress, and it lists out every product... And it lists out every project that the district has going on. So we, we look at that for completeness of our population of what we need to test. And then we go and we see, okay, you know, if this, if this item is still in progress, then there's likely to be accounts payable or at least retainage at the minimum that's going to be outstanding on this construction project. And then we further go back and we would look at any disbursement written after year-end that could be related to construction. So that way, we're then testing the listing that we're provided to make sure that there's nothing missing from the list by looking at checks written after year-end that could possibly be related to one of these projects. So we kind of test it from the completeness and then we test it from like an existence standpoint by looking at the subsequent checks written.
Thank you.
And can I quickly, Mr. Jackson, I just want to thank Roy Sprague and Matt Morgan. They're doing an excellent job of providing that information to us and making it easy on everybody. So I just wanted to add that.
So Karen, you mentioned accruals, one of which happened to be pension accruals. And, and there's some important assumptions that are involved in the pension accruals. And if you take a look at the footnotes, it's mentioned in there. And there was a, a change in, I think you, you wrote present value being used. So what was the change? Why was it made? What impact did it have?
Let's see.
And I'm sorry, I did not write down the page number.
No, that's okay. It's probably on page, I think it's around page 62 where some of that information is. And I think the main one that there was a change in was the OPEB, I believe, wasn't it, Greg? It's on the OPEB where they had a change in some of the items. Now, there was a change associated with both of them having to do with investments.
Yes. Yeah, the pension, I mean, so the pension liability, if you look at that, it went down significantly. And that was really based on the plan performance really well by the state. So the state plan as a total, the investments performed above what was anticipated by the actuaries. Therefore, it lowered the overall obligation of the plan. Therefore, your proportionate share of that went down. So that's why you see such a big swing in the pension liability. And actually, if you turn to page 66 of the report, so when we talk about sensitivity of estimates, I mean, it's disclosed right here in the financial statement, you can see how much a 1% swing in the discount rate used by these actuaries will affect that liability. Right now, the current rate, discount rate being used is 7 and 1/4%. If that were to decrease to 6 and 1/4%, your proportionate share of that liability would have been 370 million. If it were to increase by 1%, it would go down to 6 million. So you can see there's a lot of sensitivity related to this calculation and how that affects, you know, what gets recorded in the financial statements.
Karen, does the school district pick those key discount factors? Or is that done by an entity outside the district?
It's actuarially determined. And in addition to that, we receive a report or a comprehensive annual financial report from TRS. And that is audited also by the state auditor's office.
So TRS, they're the ones who, who develop the basic assumptions and then we rely upon their work. Is that correct?
Correct.
So we had a change in accounting principles when, as I was first coming on the, on the board. And what was predicted actually happened. So we, we show a massive deficit. And so my question is, showing this exceptionally large deficit, how are we ever going to be able to pay our bills going forward?
Well, the deficits that's shown is on the government-wide financial statements. And for the new board members, there's really two sets of financials that are shown here. One's a government-wide. And the government-wide, what it takes into consideration is if all our expenditures came due all at one time, which is not going to be the case. And then the governmental fund financial statements are talking about, can you meet your annual obligations? So the district, basically, if you look at the government-wide, it looks negative and it looks bad. However, just so you know, even Texas Education Agency realizes this. And they, for the first, do not rate that particular criteria because of that. Also, if you look at the district's financial statements, what you want to look at is can we meet our ongoing obligations? And have we been making our legally required contributions each year, which we have? And so that, that's the part that you would want to be concerned about, which is in the governmental fund financial statements. Do you have anything to add, Greg?
No, that was perfectly said, yeah.
So another way of saying it, we may be accustomed to looking at financial statements for for-profit entities, but we can't use the same lens when we're looking at a governmental entity. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, you know, your whole budgeting process is really based around the fund-level financial statements. I mean, that's, that's where you're determining the current year income, current year expenditures are based on, at the fund level. The government-wide level, again, as Karen mentioned, would be, you know, if we were to look at all the long-term liabilities of the district, we'd also have to take into account all the long-term assets or all the assets of, of the district as well. So I mean, you know, you're looking at almost $4 billion in assets against, you know, $4 billion in liabilities. So, you know, looking at, looking at it from the government-wide full accrual basis is very hard for a government that taxes and budgets at the fund level. Just doesn't provide the same, same bit of information. More, I would focus more on the governmental funds from an operational standpoint.
When Enron collapsed, there was a call for rotation of auditors for public companies at least every five years. And public companies and SEC have, have moved somewhat away from that. But the question I have for you, Greg, which may be a little snarky, but don't worry, I have snarky questions for everybody. How long has your firm been doing the audit? How long have you been the audit partner? So, and, and then based on your answer, I may have follow-up questions.
Okay. So let's hear, so, so I've been on the audit for, I guess, five years now, either as a manager on engagement. I've been the partner for the past two years. My firm, which merged with the predecessor firm, has been conducting the audit for 16 years, I believe.
That's correct.
So, yeah, so, so 16 years is how long HLSK merged with Weaver has been conducting the audit.
So why would it not be considered best practices to, to bring in a fresh set of eyes?
Well, I'll try not to be too self-serving with this, this response. So, you know, even like, as you mentioned, like PCAOB came in when Enron collapsed and tried to require audit rotation. What they really discovered was when you rotate auditors, you lose all the institutional knowledge that the auditor had. So one of the things that PCLB recommends is partner rotation for public companies. They don't require a firm rotation. One thing that Weaver institutes to ensure that there's not complacency within the audit team is we rotate positions within our team so that you do have a fresh set of eyes looking at the financials. So those are some of the, the key things that we do to ensure that, you know, we're not, we're not being complacent. Also, because we conduct these audits in accordance with GAGAS, you know, we have to go and obtain CPE. So we have to stay on top of all the latest changes that are coming out. And as y'all are aware, well, there's been a lot of changes in the auditing environment over the last five years. So just keeping up with the standards, having a fresh look, I mean, we basically have to start fresh just about every year because there's so many changes that have been going on in the past regarding, you know, leases and pension and OPEB and how that affects the overall financial statements, let alone all the new federal funding that has been coming out. So, you know, just inherently, it's almost impossible to stay too complacent with just the changes in the environment. What else?
You may want to mention the peer review.
Oh, yeah, the peer review process, absolutely. So also because we do GAGAS audits, we are required to have a peer review. So the auditors get audited every three years. So we have, Ida Bailey is our peer review firm that comes in or a large national firm that comes in. And they, they audit us to make sure that we're upholding to all the standards that are required to conduct government audits. And we have received pass ratings every time. You either get a pass or a fail essentially. So we've gotten a pass rating for every peer review we've ever done. The district also goes out for RFQ every five years. So this is a process where the district submits an RFQ, asks for qualified firms to prepare a proposal. Those proposals get evaluated by the committee that makes the decision on which auditor to select. We were selected to get, I think it was 2019 was the last, was the last contract we were submitted. So, so the district is doing the things to ensure that, you know, they're, the most qualified firm is conducting the audit. But in addition to that, you know, we as auditors take responsibility of that in, in that process as well by, by rotating our staff.
And so those RFQs as a board, we will see those responses. And Karen, thank you. You did in fact anticipate my next follow-up question on the peer review audit. Oddly enough, I'm old enough that I was on one of the very first international firms being audited as required by the SEC. So that's always near and dear to my heart. Thank you for your work. Karen, thank you to you and your staff, having been on both sides of the fence. I know there's a tremendous amount of work and you are under a deadline to meet that deadline. What is the deadline for our audit to be published by?
150 days after fiscal year-end.
And have we satisfied that requirement?
Yes, we will.
Which is also a standard question. Greg, thank you for coming out tonight. And Karen, once again, thank you and your team.
Thank you.
May we move this to the consent agenda, looking to my right, to my left. Holly, please. The board will consider approving the district and campus improvement plans for the 2022-2023 school year. We do have one speaker this evening, Lisa Abuka.
Hi, good evening. Do I need to, like, my name's Lisa Abuka. Do I need my address or anything like that? Okay, thank you.
And just to let you know, a yellow light will come on when you have 30 seconds left. And then a red light will come on when, when your time's up. As soon as the red light comes on, you have about time to make one sentence to wrap up your comments.
Thank you.
So, go ahead and start when you're ready.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to make a public comment about the campus improvement plans and for the district plans. I am a new parent to Cypher ISD, not new to paying taxes as I for ISD. But the second thing that I noticed, being a new parent to Cypher, was that the buses were really, really late. We did get them on time and the transportation department added five new routes to our elementary school. And by really late, I mean, our pickup time was 8:05 and the buses weren't getting there until 8:45, like, really late. School starts at 8:45. So I would like to recommend, as part of the district and campus improvement plans, that kind of like airlines have their on-time percentages, that we have on-time percentages for getting the kids to school and getting them home from school. Like, you know, we departed on time and we arrived on time. Just a, it may be a dashboard at some point in the future just to see how that's performing. Because also, being at a Title I school, it's one of the barriers for the kids' learning is that they're not there on time. They don't get to class, they can't learn. So I would just like to recommend that for the district to consider. Do you want me to do my next one too?
Well, if it's on the campus improvement plan, go right ahead.
It is not, it's on zoning.
Okay. Then if you would, go ahead and take your seat.
Thank you so much.
When we come up for the next one. So as a predicate for the viewing audience, the board works together with management to come up with a board monitoring package that covers a wide set of goals by categories. These then flow into the district improvement plan. And then the district improvement plan then flows down to the campus improvement plan with each campus changing it as appropriate for their particular campus. And so, do we have a presentation on that tonight, Linda?
We do not, Mr. Jackson. It's questions only.
Okay. So let me turn to the right. Scott? Natalie? Gilbert? Lucas? Debbie? Julie?
I just have a comment. I want to thank the, the campus staff who put together these campus improvement plans. I had served on a CPoC committee before and as a parent was involved in this process through the CPoC committee. But there are hours and hours and hours spent at the campus putting together these campus improvement plans. And I just want to acknowledge the work that goes into them. Mr. Jackson mentioned the board monitoring system. That's where we set the overall goals of the district and objectives, including on-time percentage for the buses. So that is built into our board monitoring system and it is measured. And then the departments have objectives and, and measurements that feed into that so that they can, they can show that they are meeting those goals that we have set for them. One thing I just want to just caution our board is, you know, as we tweak and modify the board monitoring system, every time we make a change, it creates a huge domino effect through the district administration, through, to the campuses. As we tweak and add things, especially as we, as we add things and not take anything off, those campus improvement plans just keep getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And there's just a lot that we're asking of our campus staff. So just something to be thinking about. As the, the information we received says, these are living documents. They can, they grow, they change as they, as we gather data and feedback on how our kids are doing. So these are really valuable documents and I'm grateful for the time put into them. Thank you.
So Linda, a couple of questions for you. And Holly, if you would have somebody from technology to come up. I can't seem to capture the right button so I get a full screen. All I have is this tiny little window that I'm looking at. Please talk about the monitor school approach and what that does and the functions of it.
Mr. Jackson, I'm going to ask Dr. Gori if she will come up. She is the one that oversees our monitor school process and she can give you a great overview of it.
Good afternoon, Mr. Jackson. What exactly is your question?
An overview of the monitor school process.
An overview of the monitor school process. So in our district, we have the privilege to support campuses who don't necessarily meet our district expectations as described last time. We set our district expectations higher than those of the state to make sure that we have a fail-safe to protect our campuses. So if a district falls below what we expect as a, a campus falls below what we expect as a district, but not below the state because we do not have any failing schools in Cypress Fairbrings ISD, we provide additional support through the monitored school process. That is a team of district personnel. That is curriculum instruction, student services, special ed services, our bilingual services department. We all go out and work alongside those campuses, performing monitored school visits, about two hours on a campus, doing campus walks, collaborating with the entire leadership, instructional leadership team, and planning and processing to make sure that we provide support to help those campuses move back above the district expectations. Again, it's our fail-safe to ensure that no one falls below the state standards.
Dr. Gori, today you were out at a monitor visit with the team. Can you just quickly share what y'all did there?
So today, like our typical monitor visits, we, the principals will send us a schedule of classrooms that we're going to visit. And we, there's about six or seven of us and we visit about five to seven classes each. So we cover a wide span of that campus, visiting those classrooms for about 10 minutes, walking with an instructional leadership member from the campus. So that person on that campus is providing us detailed insight or answering any questions that we may have. They are giving us true perspective if we have questions. It also provides us an opportunity to do some coaching with them through our questioning as well. We go, we do our walks for about 45 minutes, our campus walks, and then We go, we do our walks for about forty-five minutes, our campus walks, and then we come back and we report out our findings. We're listening for common threads, we're listening for, or looking and listening for the evidence of the common planning, those instructional practices being executed based on that common planning. We review their data, the assessment data that we have through our common assessments here at the district. And then we talk about next steps and action items in order to grow and move that campus in the, in the direction to be above those district expectations.
And that team that was out there today, again, included Dr. Gori leading it and coaching the campus, but also a member of the special ed team, of the bilingual, bilingual ESL team, student services, did I forget anybody?
School leadership.
School leadership also. So it is, it is a team that can be there, can make decisions on the spot if we need to provide additional support as well.
Now, is that service applicable only to Title I campuses, or does it apply across the board?
It applies to any campus that falls in that gap between what we set as our district expectations and above what the state expectations are. So it's not limited to Title I. It's support for any campus in our district that needs it.
So for our district improvement plan, you know, the, I felt a little bit like Charles Dickens on the, the Star Report, the good news was, we did exceptionally well compared to everybody else. The other side of the coin was comparing where we were three years ago, it wasn't quite the answer that we would have liked to have seen. So we do have some, some catch-up. Do you believe that the district improvement plan addresses bringing us back up to where we were before COVID?
I can answer that. I do believe the district improvement plan addresses that. If you look at, as you said, each individual campus sets their own targets, and then they work from there. One of the things that, that we were very pleased to see as we looked at results from this past year was looking at the achievement score and looking at the prog, at the growth. So domain one and domain two. Many districts had, had, had great improvement and scored higher than they had in the past because of the growth. And we also had campuses scored better because of the growth. But in many cases, the growth, the, the achievement might have been at seventy-two and the growth might have been at eighty-something, and it pushed them up to a B. I was very pleased to see that ours was very tight. Our, our achievement was, I think, at eighty-eight or eighty-nine, and our growth was at ninety-something. And so it's, it's very tight there. And so I'm very confident that what our campuses have proposed and their goals will lead them to where they need to be.
Excellent. Thank you, ladies. Our, our board book this time is only one thousand six hundred and some odd pages, of which probably eighty percent of that had to do with the district improvement plan and the campus improvement plan. I will admit, for the first time ever, I did not read every single CIP. But I did, I did cover what I call the Copperfield Circuit, as well as a number of other schools that I have visited, including those where Dr. Gori was, was principal, because she made a point of teaching me certain lessons that have proved to be valuable. So this is important. Do we want to move this to consent, or do we want to leave it by itself? Let me look to the left, which is on this side, my other left, right?
I wouldn't know how you own it.
I think leaving it by itself.
By itself. And to the right. So Holly, let's go ahead and have this as a standalone item. Thank you. Item three E, the board will consider authorizing the superintendent to execute a memorandum of understanding with New York University Steinhardt for speech pathology field placement. We have no presentation, questions only. Let me look to the right, to the left.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Who can we have from the administration to help us speak to any of these questions? Who should we direct them to?
I can. I can answer probably, but Barbara Lewandowski, who is over this program, can also, can also respond.
Okay. I'm just curious about why this university, is there a special nature about the program, the field of study? Is there something that's special about working with this group of folks that's very beneficial for our district?
We have a need for speech pathologists in our district. And when a college university reaches out to us because they have a student who's ready to come to Houston and specifically asked to come to Cypress Fairbanks, we need to have this agreement before we can accept them.
Very good. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? May we move this to consent then? Consent, Holly? Three F, the board will consider approving dual reading additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies. Three F one, EFA local instructional resource materials revised. Three F two, EFB local instructional resources, library materials. We have a brief presentation this evening by Marnie Collins Sims and Dr. Linda Macias. There are no, and Jennifer.
Garsteky.
Garsteky. But first, there are no speakers on this topic this evening. So who's going to lead off?
We are, much to your appreciation and delight, are not going to be the primary speakers. We're going to let Jennifer, I just call her our librarian, so, but she is the coordinator for library services. I was, Linda and I are on it to answer any questions. I was just going to comment that this is a dual reading of the policy, because we are making the changes effective as soon as possible. That's the same approach we took the last time. And just FYI, remember, we split EF and made EFA instructional resources, EFB library resources, so we could focus on the acquisition of library books, and that's the policy that you all worked through and came to consensus on and that we're continuing to work on. We are also proposing some relatively minor changes to EFA. As we worked through EFB, we saw some things that honestly, that we sort of liked, and so we've modeled those in the instructional resources. And I gave you guys last week the, the details on that, but that's all I was going to say. Thelma, what would you like to say to Louise?
Yes, this is a scary, a scary combination here. I wanted to first thank you all for the, for providing us the opportunity with additional time to truly effectively implement EFB local, and trusting our experts, our librarians, to guide us through the implementation process. In October, I provided you with an update on the progress of implementing EFB local. And this evening, Jennifer Garsteski, our librarian, our district librarian, will provide you with a more detailed, more update with the progress that we have made toward this implementation, and the expected timeline, our, our request to you to be able to do a full implementation of this policy.
Well, good evening, President Jackson, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Henry. Tonight, we would like to provide an op, an update on the implementation of EFB local. The campus librarians and teachers, along with the district curriculum and instruction team, have been diligently working through our library collections. And as you know, this is no small task when you are the third-largest district in the state, with over one point five million books in our campus libraries, and the books in over thirteen thousand classrooms. During the August District Professional Development Week, the librarians discussed the adopted policy and began analyzing their campus collections based on the new specified interest levels. This process proved more complex than printing lists and adding stickers to the books. Our biggest challenge was that many books in our libraries did not have an interest level specified in the computer record. Although time-consuming, we developed a method for our librarians to find the books, research professional journals for reviews of each title, and then add the level to the record. While tackling this project, librarians simultaneously welcomed over a hundred and seventeen thousand students into our libraries and kicked off the 2022-23 school year with orientations, checkouts, book talks, database and research lessons, author and illustrator visits, book fairs, Chromebook assistance, and so much more. Additionally, we have been meeting with our vendors, stressing the importance of improved accuracy and reliability in book reviews and interest levels. Librarians rely on these to making purchasing decisions. Many of the smaller vendors have listened to our requests and are now adding book reviews to their online sites. Our larger vendors are updating their sites as well, making interest levels and collection information even more accessible. We are still working with vendors to make sure that interest levels are added to all computer records for future book purchases. Most vendors are also adding the ability to include interest levels next to each book title listed on itemized quotes. Principals will now be able to quickly review collection levels prior to approving the book purchases. Now, since August, a group of three amazing librarians have worked with two of our vendors in an effort to find a more consistent and faster way of adding interest levels to our campus library books. By mid-October, we developed a process to quickly analyze each campus library collection, identify the titles missing the interest level, add the level into the record, and then import that improved record back into the library catalog. Although it's not perfect, we believe this method would save us thousands of hours over manually researching and adding interest levels, and more importantly, it would provide consistency across the district. We piloted this progress, or process at one of our high schools, and the outcome was as we anticipated. At this time, half of our elementaries and all but three secondary campuses have been put through this process. We are excited about the rapid progress made for adding interest levels to the campus library books. This automated process has helped moved almost three-quarters of our campuses to more than fifty percent completed within just three weeks. Once this step has been completed for all campuses, there is still more to do. Librarians will have to review assigned tags, correct discrepancies, and finalize their opt-in collections. Then librarians will visually identify the opt-in collection books by adding a label, a colored sticker, grouping the books in specific locations, or another visual designation. Finally, they will make the necessary adjustments in Destiny to verify appropriate opt-in collections by the, or opt, I'm sorry, opt-in collection access by the students. To bring our classroom libraries into alignment with EFB local, librarians met with the teachers about the new policy and shared a video to standardize training across the district. The video identified and defined the juvenile, young adult, and adult interest levels approved for Cyfer ISD. It also explained which levels are accessible for each grade and how to use Destiny, our library management system, to determine the level for each classroom library book. After viewing the video, librarians were available to answer questions and support the teachers in completing their inventories. To standardize inventory data collection across the district, a template was developed. Book information could be entered manually, but many utilized an app to scan the books and populate the spreadsheets. To determine the level of each book, the teachers were encouraged to first consult the list created by the curriculum and instruction department, which provided interest levels for hundreds of books purchased by the district. Teachers could also use the collection information available in Destiny. Since the last update to the board, all classrooms, or all campuses have made progress in their inventory and tagging of classroom libraries. Forty-six percent of our elementary classroom libraries are now complete. Middle schools are at seventy-eight percent, and high schools are eighty-two percent complete. When the policy goes into full effect, any books that have been inventoried will be available to students, and the remaining books can be added throughout the year. The Cyfer ISD Information Services Team has created programming allowing parents to give their child access beyond the default library book collection. When the parent clicks the box in the parent portal, the Destiny library program will allow the student to check out books from the opt-in collection on their campus. We have made significant progress since August, and we now have a better estimate of the amount of time needed for completion. We would like to request an extension for the full implementation of EFB local to Friday, January thirteenth, which is the day after the January board meeting and a teacher workday. When collection levels and parent opt-in choices are implemented, the librarians will need time to change settings within Destiny and verify collection access. This needs to be done when students are not in the library checking books in and out. By completing these final steps on a workday, we would not have to close the library to students, and this will give librarians the time they need to work through any situations that may arise. Also, the opt-in choices will be made available through the parent portal on this day, and books in the opt-in collection would be, would no longer be accessible without parent permission when the students return to school on Tuesday, January seventeenth. I'd like to thank the curriculum and instruction coordinators and coaches, the campus administrations, and especially the teachers and the librarians for their insight, thoughtful questions, effort and time in implementing EFB local. So this concludes our update, and Dr. Macias, Dr. Bergman, and I are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Let me look to the left, Lucas.
So with the request for having the audit complete on the January thirteenth date, what days are being planned for workdays? How many of them do you believe are required to complete the rest of the inventory?
Well, January thirteenth is already a, a district teacher workday, so I think that we will be able to get, we'll have everything prepared and ready, so when we flip that switch on that day, we're going to be ready to go, and that'll give us that day just in case to work through anything, and we'll be ready for when the students come back on the seventeenth.
So the January, how many other days between then and now do you plan on having as far as work?
I'm not sure if we have any additional workdays between now and then.
We don't have any additional workdays planned between there, but the, the librarians have been working through this on a daily basis, along with their, with their other jobs. So it hasn't, they haven't just worked on them on teacher workdays. They have been working on this throughout. And with, with the system that Jennifer talked about, where they can automate, through automation, they can, they can assign levels, that is going to speed everything up, and that's why, that's why as we looked at the timeline, that was a good time to do it and gave us time to go back and just tweak anything we needed to tweak, because it's a teacher workday.
Yeah, we also have a December, on December first, we have our face-to-face librarians meeting. All librarians in the district meet at the Berry Center, and we'll be using a lot of that time too, to work through part of this process.
Okay. No further questions?
Debbie?
No questions.
Julie?
Specific, thank you, by the way.
You're welcome.
Thank you for all your work. Thanks for the great, uh, uh, report, and, and huge thanks to the teachers and librarians, and the instructional technology team that has worked tirelessly behind the scenes to really create a whole new system to support this effort. I have, specific to what you shared, I, I, I know that there's a huge rush to implement this policy, but I don't know why it has to be done now. I mean, like, we want to implement the policy, we want to present the procedures, but I don't, I think we've created so much extra work for our librarians and our teachers. Would it, would it be bad if we said, well, have it done by the end of the year? Because kids are still checking out books, they're still reading, they're still, we're not slowing down, we're not, not educating children, but maybe we could take just a little bit more time. I mean, you.
So.
Librarians are so busy. The library is one of the busiest places in, on the campus, and, and librarians don't have those huge chunks of time to work on this, this project. I just think it, we need to think about maybe giving them a little, a little, some more additional time.
So let me start, and then you can add, Jennifer. Ms. Heineman, I think that the, the heavy lift of all this and trying to figure out how to manage it, they've done an exceptional job of, of, of doing that. The fact that they were able to figure out how to automate the process, and I'm not The fact that they were able to figure out how to automate the process, and I'm not even sure how it works, I just know they automated it, and all I'm visualizing is that they send something in, and it is able to consistently assign levels to, to books has helped, and that is what, that's actually what guided them to the date, because we talked about the date. We talked about a possible date and how much time we were going to need. And so I think that that's, that's why they have that date. With the, with the teachers, with the teachers, as, as Jennifer shared, if they-
Um, so usually, a lot of the librarians are used to administer the test, and the librarians are locations where the testing takes place, so it would be-
Probably especially now this year with the online star.
It would, it would be difficult.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just trying to find some other pockets of time where-
There really isn't any downtime, Ms. Heinemann, for the librarians either.
Right.
It is, it is, it is ongoing, and, and, like I said, the process that I think that they put in place is just, I'm so proud of them with, with the process they've been able to do.
What I was going to suggest, and I hear what you're saying, and the reason we picked the 13th week, but, you know, in working with Jennifer and Linda, we talked about dates purposely, much like we picked an implementation date after this meeting, the 13th, if we get to that week, say our technology is, is not working like we thought, or something happens, we will have the ability to come to you in January before the effective date to allow you to take action to, to choose a different effective date. So, and I've tried to, you know, not just through Jennifer, but even, I've got some library, librarian peeps now, I got invited, I've been invited to some libraries, I gotta say, I'm not, you know, not gonna say I'm pretty proud of that, I've been named honorary librarian a couple places, but, so I've been talking with the librarians and making sure they knew that not only, you know, this board, but also this administration supports them, and I, the ones with whom I've spoken unequivocally have expressed that and feel that, and they know that, and I share that with them every time I talk with them. And I've had a couple of them say, one at elementary, actually, and one at high school, so both ends of the spectrum, and they both said, you know, this has been hard work, but this is good work, and this was, you know, this is important, and it was, you know, it was maybe necessary, you know, we needed to get our arms around all of this, get a, a good systemic process in place, and they've been very positive about it. I've not seen a single, experienced a single librarian who hasn't been committed and supported. And the three ladies that were pictured there that are, they're rock stars, you know, we, they're, y'all call them lead librarian, anyway, at the different levels, and I'll pick up the phone and call them if I have a question, just about the way it works, not even, you know, related to this. So they're very, very bright group of individuals. So I hear what you're saying, Julie, and I feel that as well, and that's the reason the 13th gives us time that if we say, you know, nope, it wasn't what we thought, then you will have time to save us from ourselves.
We'll come back to you.
Okay, well, good. That makes me feel a little bit better. I just want to make sure that we are not putting undue stress, any additional undue stress on our librarians and our classroom teachers. And I have heard the same thing, I've, you know, I've spent, I'm in the library every week, and the process is challenging, but the end product is going to be exceptional, and it will be helpful for parents and for educators, so I appreciate, thank you.
Mr. Jackson, if I could?
Yes, Lucas.
I actually also wanted to follow up, as someone that does technology implementations as a career, I do appreciate and wanted to give a shout out to all our librarians and teachers. I understand the creativity involved in trying to, you know, figure out, okay, manual process, no bueno, is there an automated path, what might that be, and then dealing with the new software system in Destiny. And honestly, for everybody, I am 100% certain that the out-of-the-box capabilities of the software did not function to what we needed, so you guys had to figure out how to customize or tweak or configure, and that's a discovery process all on its own. So I appreciate the nature of the work that you're in, and I understand that you're continually marching through a series of unknowns and discovering new questions in the next week you didn't have in the prior week and having to work through those. So I understand the nature of the process, and I appreciate the difficulty. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
They actually had to create these programs and systems, the technology group, because they did not exist. Our library managed the system, yeah, could not handle that. They've, they've created much of this.
Shout out to my technology peeps.
Going to the right, Scott.
Just a quick question, maybe I misheard it. The pilot program that's currently, that was currently implemented that found the way we do this quicker, is that currently implemented now, full board throughout the district for all?
Yeah, so we are, as librarians are ready, because there's a few things that they have to do in their campus libraries first before we can run them through the process, so we're giving them that time, and so, like I said, we're just down to, you know, actually, as of today, it's a little less than half of our elementary libraries, and I think we only have one more secondary campus. I'd have to go back and double-check the data, but it's been, it's been moving very quickly, so we're, we're just really excited about the progress. It sure does beat doing it manually, that's for sure.
And this is for teachers as well?
No, this is for our lib, for the campus library books, and so then the teachers rely on, so the faster we can do our jobs and get ours in the system, then the teachers can use Destiny to look up the levels if they have any questions for the books that are in their classroom library.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Natalie.
Thank you. Downtime in schools, there is no downtime in schools, so I definitely do understand the amount of work that's been done, but I'll just illustrate why it is important. Families are asking, I had three questions in the last week. One from a parent asking why Flamer was still available to their child. I had a second one, a parent, it was really more about the other policy for curriculum, instructional materials, but questions about the choices they had of reading material in their English one class, not one was appropriate for the level of innocence of their child. And a student today texted me wondering why their teacher said that they could read this certain play, but they couldn't use the audiobook. This is a dyslexic student, so they were wondering why they were told that that wasn't available to them. So this, this date I support, because there's confusion out there, and those kind of things can have a time upon which they can settle in. Everyone can know the protection factor available for their kids, teachers can have protection as well, because the process is closed up, and they can know that they've done their process, and that for them is safe. And so, but I would also share the, I would like to have a copy of the presentation if possible, but I think it was, was it in high school that 82% of them have done their classroom libraries? Yes. That's awesome. Way to go, high school teachers. I do hope they kept them at school, because I did hear concerns out there that a lot of teachers were just going to take them home. And so a neighbor of mine volunteered to go help a high school teacher who had about 385 titles in their classroom library, so that they wouldn't just take them home, and he was able to use some of your process and some of another process, but similar in this idea. And just so you will know, because of the Destiny slowdown, it took about an hour and 45 minutes to scan the 385 titles with a scanner, 71 had to be entered manually, then they were able to go into Destiny and do about five to seven a minute, just going into Destiny themselves in the app, not waiting for the librarian spreadsheet. And so the whole process took maybe three, four hours max, and so I just wanted to have some reference for myself as we ask these, this is, that's a lot of time, four hours in a teacher's life is a lot, but it is doable. And so I just want to share those facts, because those are why I feel very excited. I'm proud and pleased of the process, and I'd like us to choose a date, do it, and be done, and move on.
And Dr. Blasingame, you are correct, we do have some teachers who took some of their books home, and so they themselves went in there and we did some of the books out, and some of them needed to go home. And, but they did, they made those decisions because it is their classroom library, but there are many books there that we also have bought as a district.
Excellent, thank you, and I do, I so appreciate you guys, your process, your presentation, thank you.
Gilbert.
Outstanding job. I don't know where to start as far as applauding the effort that's ongoing and the challenges that were presented, to hear you guys saying that you start, made a whole new process start to work. When we go to our different conferences throughout the state or outside the state, this is a big topic. So I sure hope you stay for a long time with us, and I ask Linda and Tom, or whoever presents this, I expect this to be presented at some time, and maybe in the summer in San Antonio or Dallas, wherever that state convention is at, because you have a lot of answers that other districts in the state are asking. Because if the cameras were here, this would be front page going on on how the district, the administration, and all the librarians are handling the business and answering questions from the, whatever part you're asking, have it been left, middle, or right. So this is, this is huge. This is not a small venture, and I think you're going to help a lot of people within the state and throughout the country. A great job, I applaud you.
Thank you.
Debbie.
Question I just thought about is, I have been a volunteer reader at one of our elementary schools for eight years until the interruption of the pandemic, and then my having COVID, and I'm returning next week to reading. So in the past, I have quite a collection of children's books, because I have five grandchildren, but in the past, I have always brought my own books from home that I've bought at Barnes and Nobles, but I'm assuming now that our volunteers, our volunteer readers should only read books that the classroom teacher has. Would that be correct?
Probably books that are either in the classroom teacher or within the classroom library. I would definitely contact the librarian and perhaps the principal, because I do know from having been on an elementary campus that every elementary campus might do guest readers a little bit differently, so that would be something to check with them.
And, and so part of, part of that answer is yes, but yes in that you, we check with your library, because you want to make sure that the books that you're bringing in are already on the list that are approved.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I would add my, my kudos to the comments of my colleagues. Excellent job, tremendous undertaking, undertaking. As a recovering CISA, the intellectual part of my brain was intrigued with the process, and I really wanted to be down in, in the details to, to look over your shoulder to see how you're going to create a new process, because the first way it was envisioned, I knew that won't work. But there is tremendous talent in this district, and I knew that y'all would develop a new approach. So thank you to you and the librarians, thank you to technology, and of course, it's always wonderful when technology can work well and interpret what the users actually want done, you know, because that's, that doesn't always happen. They used to call, call in people like me to try and translate between, between the two, because you don't always speak the same language. I do have a bit of a snarky question.
Okay.
I don't know if Greg is still in the audience, but to let him know that he's not the only one. And this may go to you, Mark. I know that our elected officials had talked about passing legislation to actually address how this was going to be accomplished, and several of them shared with me their ideas, which was not the same approach that we were taking. So the snarky question I have for you is, do we, have we heard anything that TEA may come and disavow our approach, or that our legislators may draft legislation that will require us to go into a different direction?
In actuality, I've heard from both sides of the aisle applauding what we're doing here in Cyfair, because, you know, it's, it's, it's been real popular lately to talk about parents' rights, but a lot of times when parents are talking about parents' rights, they're only talking about their rights, they're not talking about other people's rights. And I think we've set up a system where all parents have a right to help dictate what, what their children can read. So I'm, I'm proud of what y'all have come up with and what our librarians certainly, I mean, look at this group of people up here. Who wouldn't trust that group of people with their kids? I mean, that's the salt of the earth, and we're so lucky to have them.
Mr. Jackson, if I might just add one more thing, I just want to give another shout out to Jennifer, because she has, she came on board and just took off running and has just led this initiative, but Todd Sapulva, that back there, wait, Todd, is actually Jennifer's supervisor, he's right there, been right there by her side, and then Dr. Bergman over here has just overseen that from, from my team's level as well. So just a shout out to them as well.
Excellent, and thank you for reminding us that this is, in fact, a team approach. It's not an individual effort, and clearly could not be accomplished. I do think it's important that we set a date, because if we don't set a date, it's too easy to, to permit something else of importance to come in and occupy our time. I know when we were talking about a date, the actual consensus on this board, before we picked November, the consensus was January 1. We turned to the superintendent and said, what's your best guess? And Mark said, January 1. But the board thought we needed to have a tighter date of November to make certain we were making progress. You have made tremendous progress. I don't think that that was a, what I used to call a plastic date. I think we needed to have a firm idea in mind, even, even knowing that we might have to go back to that January 1, which was collectively in everybody's mind. So I like setting that date of the 13th, but I also like that you will come back to us in January to say, oh, we may need some more time. I also like the approach that you developed some time ago for the individual classrooms, where you have books that are available, and then you'll have a set waiting to be evaluated. So I can't say enough positive things about the overall approach. Is there an estimate of how many hours we have from librarians on this task?
I know within August, the short time of August and September, that we had put in over 2,000 hours collectively, and that, many of that was on weekends and in the evenings and on their own time. So that's why it was so important that the three librarians, that they worked with two of our vendors, and the capabilities within those programs to make them work together to be able to, to speed this up. Otherwise, I don't know if we would have been done the school year. It really, it was a manually having to look at every single book and lay hands on every book, and, and look at the levels and add that into the computer record. So that was, would have been a tremendous undertaking with 87 different librarians, you know, looking at the project, and so this is helping to streamline it, and again, make it consistent across the district.
2,000 hours of overtime is a mouthful, particularly when that's only the first two months of an endeavor, and we're in month four of the process. I am impressed that vendors did come in and say, yes, we will work with you. I think that's a testament of having that strong relationship between management and vendors, that vendors will in fact be responsive. I would note that The Chronicle ran an article about a neighboring district that had decided to take one approach on this matter, but shortly after going in one direction, they actually changed and pretty much adopted the approach that, that y'all designed. So I think, Gilbert, I think you're probably right, that, that the approach that y'all have put together may well become the standard for, for the state, at least for, for large campuses. Thank you once again, good presentation.
Mr. Jackson, I will, I will tell you that with the vendors. I had several opportunities to walk by Dr. Bergman's office when she was meeting with these two other, and talking to vendors. It was not a request, a nice request, it was pressure. It was, I was so proud of them, it was pressure, it was pressure to get them to move on this and, and help us create something where we could manage it. So you're right, it's going to benefit many districts.
And Mr. Jackson, one more comment, if I, if I left it unsaid, I think it might not be helpful. Just from a, we're going into the legislative session, and so kind of responding- helpful. Just from a, we're going into the legislative session, and so kind of responding to something that Dr. Henry stated, pretty much regardless of however this flushes itself out, if we do have, I'll use the word contribution from the state on how this might be done, the simple fact is, is that now we have the data. And regardless of how this ends up being finally implemented, given the fact that we have the data, whatever lift is required then is going to be so much more easier than it was to this point. So none of the work that we've done would be considered diminished. It's actually really important foundational. Getting the raw data and the basic data as we have is everything.
Well, and that is an excellent point. And the changes that legislators told me what they were envisioning, but I don't know that any of them happened to be librarians, would cause us to pivot. But you are correct. Once the data has been collected, it's easy enough to go back to technology and say, oh, we need for you to write some new software and do a table lookup with the new requirements that the state has given us. And I suspect that technology will be able to wave their magic wand, or at least their magic hands and minds to get that job done. So that's an important point to make. Thank you. So may we move this to consent? And of course, are we on second reading or first reading? Marnie?
So this is a dual reading, and so it will remain a, it's probably easiest if you don't mind if it would remain a standalone item.
So is that appropriate with the board? This will be standalone? The next item, 3G. The board will consider approving on first reading additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies. 3G1 EHB local special programs gifted and talented students revise. 3G2 EIF local academic achievement graduation revise. We have no speakers this evening. Do we have questions? Looking to the right, Scott, Natalie, Gilbert. To the left, Lucas, you missed your chance. Debbie, Julie?
I just have one comment regarding EIF local academic achievement graduation. There's the, what's been changed is some clarification on what constitutes confirmation that a student has completed the FAFSA or the TAFSA. And I think, I just want to acknowledge that this is a, is, as a requirement for graduation, is very challenging for many of our students. So I appreciate that we included in the change to this policy to EIF local, a place for, that references for students who choose not to complete or submit a FAFSA or TAFSA, TAFSA, that it references how parents with the assistance of campus counselors can document if they choose not to complete those forms.
So is this an unfunded mandate, or is the state giving us money to carry this out?
We're not getting any money to carry it out. It was part of House Bill 3.
Okay, thank you. I do have a question for you, Linda, on 3G1 EHB local. And it relates to a question I asked, I guess, about six years ago. Are, so when we looked at the taper report, the percentage of our children being identified as being Hispanic had a lower GT percentage than our other subpop. And I know that that has gradually risen over the years. So the first question is, are we comfortable that the way the policy is written, that we will carry on to make certain that the GT testing is out there for all, even if they may be Spanish speakers or emerging English learners?
Yes, I'm confident that the policy allows for access for all students. What we have done, and you may recall, is the last couple of years, we started screening all kindergarten students for GT. And so that, so the identification piece started a lot earlier. And we've, I believe, what Dr. Bergman shared with me is between 2001 and 2022, we had a 2.8 increase in GT students. And of those, 13.5% were Hispanic. So we're starting to see more and more students, and 6.8, 6.8% were African American. And 7.2% were bilingual. So we're, little by little, we're starting to see more and more, more and more students from diverse populations being identified as GT.
So the early identification approach is in fact working?
Yes.
I know that that approach was used with my son, who is a dyslexic, because he had difficulty since words and numbers moved around on the page and wouldn't stay still. And so there was a special assessment, but that was, that was done in kindergarten as well. But I'm now glad that that is available across the board and not just for those with special needs. We had many items in here redlined, and I suspect it's because of House Bill 3, but it's important to ask. So we had a section about preparing an annual report, and that's all been marked through. So is it because we just don't want to prepare the report, or have we been excused from the preparation as a matter of law?
That was removed as a matter of law. We're still expected to follow all the processes and procedures for GT identification and provide a GT program that's in accordance with the state requirements, but we no longer have to do the reporting to the state.
Very good. Thank you. Other questions on 3G? Natalie?
Thank you, President Jackson. Those were great questions about looking at the different subpopulations within the GT. And I guess I have a question about the role of language and cognition and the length of time we allow students to use and utilize the native language in their instructional program. I think bilingualism is a gift, and it's something we should be pushing all kids towards. I'd be interested to know, is that GT identification, does it taper off as kids are older? Or how does that, what's the impact of the level of, or the amount of time they have support in their native language compared to their ability to be identified in gifted and talented?
As I said, we are identifying down in the K level, and you probably know that there are some nonverbal assessments that are used there as well. So that certainly helps our second language learners. But we have an early exit program in this district. So by second grade, they're exiting the program. So continued identification would be in the language of instruction.
That's definitely a question I'd like us to discuss as a group, the idea of why we have an early exit program, given the need for bilingual teachers and just in our own, very own district goals, we have bilingual, specific recruitment goals around bilingual teachers. This ability to build bilingual citizens out of our district would be really something worth discussing. So I'm not sure exactly how that happens, if that's something I request as an agenda item at a board meeting, or how maybe it's a workshop issue, or how we could really discuss our bilingual program and the early exit decision, and is there one that the community would have more interest in?
Well, and I will share with you that at one time, Dr. Blasengame, we did have a late exit program. Our students did not perform well in the late exit program. And so we did, we collected a lot of data. And so our students began to perform much better in the early exit program. And if you look at our data for kids who have exited the program, you will find that many times they outperform our all population group. Now, that doesn't mean that we don't support the native language being continued to be developed, and we work with our parents in parenting meetings about ways to develop the language. And then we look for other opportunities, such as our Spanish camps during the summer, or our Spanish ABL program. So we're looking for other opportunities to continue the language being alive in, not only in the home, but being able to use it as well for our bilingual students. And we have a lot of teachers, actually, in our district that went through our program, our early exit program, and are now teachers in the district. So that's not keeping them from becoming bilingual teachers.
I did actually hear from a bilingual teacher in our district who is also a parent in our district just two weeks ago, and their concern was for their child, their goal is bilingualism, and their child was not able to be in the bilingual program. And they were seeking ways to figure out how they could support their child for that language acquisition because they spent eight hours a day at school. I would also be interested in that data, if you could share it. What is the measurement star? Is that what we measured long-term success? And I'd look at our graduate profile, and especially as we work into the committee that I'll be serving on, that's looking at what are we trying to produce in CFISD? If it's a test taker, that's one thing. If it's a citizen ready to be, as our tagline says, a global citizen ready to go out and produce in the world, I would say the goal of bilingualism is more important than passing a test. And so I would definitely, would love to see the data we counted, what was our measure? Because everything I've read, and I've done a lot of research around this, is that the long-term access to language is not only academic benefit, but it's cognitive and linguistic benefit, and more than that, sociocultural processes, and the ability to understand others and work with others are improved. And so I would love to see what we measured. And you also, I'm speaking to you as a parent who chose a bilingual dual-language program for my child because of the value. I see nothing she lost, and I see everything she gained by being able to be bilingual by fifth, you know, at fifth grade and continued on. And so I think it's such a gift to students and people. She's able to serve. She went on a trip and was able to serve people in Spanish, and this, the power to see that she could help outside of herself. So I definitely would love to see the data we chose, and then I think that would be something I'd like to see so we can bring it into the conversation about the portrait of a graduate of CFISD.
We did, we've been an early exit program for many, many, many years. I don't even know what data we still have. But yes, it is, it is, it was our state testing where they were not performing. So you're correct, that is, that is what we use. But again, I want to stress that, that because we have an early exit program does not mean that we do not support Spanish literacy and growing students who have that bilingualism. And we work with our parents to make sure we continue that. So I just want to share that, that doesn't mean that we are, that we're not promoting that. We are promoting that.
Yes, and I'll bring that example that came up last couple of weeks ago back to you, because you're as amazing. You are an amazing professional. You've done amazing work in this district in our instruction and our curriculum, and you always solve problems. It's just like the library policy. So I appreciate you.
And I would note that from time to time, we do in fact have that conversation. We've had it twice since I've been on the board. You know, the last time we talked about it is a neighboring district had piloted dual-language, and it was well-publicized when they canceled it. I happen to have been invited to speak at that district on a different program. So I sat in the audience. So I listened to perhaps as much of an hour worth of parents talking about the program being canceled, but also listening to the trustees identify why the program was canceled. And at the end of the day, for that one district, it came down to a matter of dollars and cents. And this is before the last House Bill 3 was passed, and they were receiving a tremendous amount of money more on a per-student basis than we did. So it is worthwhile to visit it. As I said, we've talked about it twice, and it makes sense to talk about it again. But I imagine Karen will also have something to say in the conversation. Then if we take a look at 3H, and, well, for 3G, you know, we've moved some of these to consent. Is 3G also a dual reading, Marnie, or not?
That, the only dual readings are EFA and EFB, and then we have some first readings, and we have some second readings.
So when they're first readings, we aren't going to move them to consent because we'll bring them up for a board meeting a second time?
No, I mean, you can move them to consent because just as you said, it's, we're passing it for the first reading, but as you've noted, it will be looked at a second time. And sometimes we do look at it, or we get comments, and we make changes between first and second reading. We actually have a policy, there was a slight change, and we put that in the explanatory notes between first and second reading. So, but you can still put it on consent if you would like. That's the board's decision.
Do we want to move this to consent? Let's do so, Holly. 3H. The board will consider approving on second reading additions, revisions, or deletions to district policies. 3H1 EFA local attendance compulsory attendance revise. 3H2 FEC local attendance attendance for credit revise. Looking to my right, questions? Scott, Natalie, Gilbert. To my left, Lucas, Debbie, Julie. I, of course, have a question. And I guess this would go to you, Deborah. In here, we had a lot of redlining in here, and one of the significant redlining, significant changes to excused absences and a disappearance of holy days. Did I understand that correctly? And what are we doing, and what does this mean?
So holy days, religious holy days are still excused absences. And what we did, we just, Tazby recommended that we remove some of the language from local because it was already illegal. And so it's the same information, we just removed it from local. And religious holy days are still possibly excused.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So may we move this now to consent? Holly, thank you. 3I. The board will consider awarding bids and contracts and/or authorizing purchase orders as recommended in the posted agenda item. 3I1 Abtec console system for Cypher Police Department. 3I2 Carpet and Resilient Flooring. 3I3 Movable Walls Display Panels Pedal Stools for Artwork for Visual and Performing Arts Center, BPAC. 3I4 Service Tech Truck for Nutrition Services. Any questions? Looking to my left, to my right. May we move this to consent on the right, to the left? Holly? 3J. The board will consider approving construction proposals and contracts paid from bond funds to the recommended contractors and authorize the superintendent or designee to execute all necessary documents related to such contracts as follows. 3J1 2022 Warner &amp; Woodard ES renovations. 3J2 Visual and Performing Arts Center digital marquee. To my right, questions? Scott, Natalie, Gilbert. Left, Lucas?
I think just one question. And so given that we have our Visual and Performing Arts Center, that is going to be very highly visible. And anytime we have, it's not a huge number, but it's a half a million dollar sign. You know, I think it probably deserves a question on how it was selected, the criteria that you guys went through, the process that you went through.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So LED Partners is a vendor of choice. LED Partners does all of our marquees throughout the district. I think if you've noticed, some of our elementaries driven by our new construction, we use them. The reason we selected LED Partners because it's a cloud-based system. We can push out messages remotely. They also help us with graphics and support. The reason that we are doing a marquee at the Visual and Performing Arts Center, obviously, it's off 290. We wanted a sign that you could see driving 290 East and 290 West at 65, hopefully 65 miles an hour.
Yeah. So the assumption here is that it's probably one of the most highly visible signs in the district?
Yes, just because of the location.
Just because of the location.
And because of the types of performances that we're going to be having at this center. You know, when you take into account a high school marquee or an elementary marquee, they're mostly viewed from residential streets or when parents pull into a drop-off zone. This one we wanted visible to market our students, our performances, multiple types of performances at this, at this center.
Okay. And is there any particular aspects of it that are unusual, given its location? Is the size unusual? Is it larger than others?
It is larger than others. It's taller. I mean, if you look at the Visual and Performing Arts Center, it's about 80 feet tall. We have, this sign is going to be about, I think, 35 feet tall, just because when you drive down 290, you need something that you can see. The LED board is bigger. It's about 260 square feet, just so that we can advertise the performances that we're going to have. It will complement the Visual and Performing Arts Center.
Very good. Okay, I just, because I know when Tom's driving real fast, he needs some extra time to read it.
He'll have plenty of time to read it. Depends on how fast Mr. Jackson drives.
Slowly, slowly.
Thank you.
Debbie?
No questions.
Julie?
Just, I just wanted to clarify, this package is actually for three signs. Is that correct?
It's for two signs.
Two signs, and they're $109,000 each. I'm looking at it right now.
You're looking at?
The bid, the package. And the additional cost that go into that total $500,000 includes the monument, the brick.
You're right. So.
The cloud service, the licensing, like, it all adds up.
It all adds up.
But the signs are actually $109,000 each.
The LED portion is $109,000.
Right.
But you're talking about, we have to build a monument.
Correct. Correct.
We have to, the Visual and Performing Arts Center sign is backlit, so that you can see it to know what facility it is.
Running the power, the cloud service.
It's power, it's data, it's cloud, it's support, it's licensing. It's not that we're paying $500,000 for a sign.
For a sign, correct.
It's turnkey.
Right. All in costs.
And long-term maintenance.
Long-term maintenance, it's a long-term contract.
It was a very thorough package.
It is.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So my standard question is, as we talk about Warner and Woodard, um, one, have we, uh, since we're having renovations, have we taken a look to, to consider if we're at a floodplain, uh, for these? And then secondly, if you would briefly describe what the renovations are for?
Yes, sir. Neither of these-
And then the third one is, for the vendor who was selected, uh, was it the low bidder? And if not, why did we select it?
I'm going to start from reverse. This is the low bidder, Division 1 contractors, was the low bidder on this contract. Uh, this scope is going to be the 2019 Bonds Safety and Security Scope, uh, security for open concept classrooms, additional impact-resistant glass, more card readers, lockdown buttons, just like the scope we've committed, or completed recently in the other elementary schools. Neither of these schools are located within a floodplain, and we did not experience any flooding in these facilities during Harvey.
I just had, I think I've had this before, I'm just trying to understand, and thank you, you sent me information that helped me understand the bidding process and architects and construction. And so I see the, the one, two, three, four, five, six, um, companies that I know have done incredible quality work across the district for us. And I just wondered, was every company out there have the ability to bid on a job like this, or is there only a vetted group approved, kind of, that meets a standard that's able to bid on these contracts?
Any company, any company can bid. We advertise these publicly. Any contractor can submit a, a proposal for consideration.
And then do they go through a rubric to see if they then qualify to be on this list of ones we would choose?
So we take the proposals, we log down their cost, and then we go into an evaluation committee, and that's where we vet these contractors.
And so each of them could. And is one of the criteria, how much work they've done for the district before, and what percentage is that?
It's, so one of the criterias is, so we have price, quality of work, subcontractors, past performance with the district. It's, I think that is 10 points, past performance with the district, out of, out of 120.
And the, and the one about quality work, that's based upon who's, uh, who evaluates the quality of the work?
Well, so our A and E team evaluates, our team evaluates. It's based on the quality of work, obviously from past performance, but also reputation within the industry, past experience who's working with these contractors. That's where we determine the quality of work.
So you've been talking about another district, if they built in a different district, like HISC or Fort Bend, we would find out about that process.
Right, we would, we do references, and we send reference sheets out. Our A and E team sends reference sheets out to districts, to districts, and they rate them on a scale of one to 10. And then we take that into account during the evaluation process.
Excellent. So it's less than 10%, that is those who already do business with us that gets in there.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
May we move this to consent? Holly? I'm sorry, Gilbert?
I'm done, if you're done.
Yes, he's done. 3K. The board will consider making a determination the good cause did not exist as required by law for Pamela Bentley, Emily Cascano, Letitia Cortez, Dianna Corien, Arley Dice, Jacqueline Escatell, Ronald Figs, Arlie Flores, Anita Garcia, Isabel Gonzalez, Jasmine Jackson, Alnitha Lewis Oglesby, Blake Orsak, Courtney Price, Irene San Martin, Jeanette Shields, and Elizabeth Zimmerman, to resign their respective employment contracts. This item may be discussed in closed session pursuant to Section 551.074. There are no speakers on this topic this evening. Uh, Marnie, uh, will we be, uh, going into closed session for this?
Um, any questions would need to be addressed in closed session, so I have it posted for closed session.
Very good. We'll move on to item 3L. The board will review and consider the adoption of revised board operating procedures outlining the duties of a public official. This item may be discussed in closed session pursuant to Section 551.074. There are no speakers this evening on this topic. Uh, Marnie, once again, will we be moving to closed session on this item?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Although item 4A, under the discussion portion of the agenda, will be presented at the regular board meeting on Monday, November 14th, 2022, we have one patron this evening to speak on item 4A. The administration will discuss establishing attendance boundaries for elementary number 58 and middle school number 20, and modifying multiple attendance boundaries. Our speaker is Lisa Abuka. And once again, uh, I will remind you that, uh, when you have 30 seconds left, the yellow light will come on. When your time's expired, the red light will come on, and you have time to wrap up your comment.
I should be short, thank you. Um, I just wanted to, since it was dealing with zoning, I don't know if this is the appropriate moment, but, um, so, just a story about my address. I am zoned in an elementary school that is well outside of my neighborhood. Um, and we are closer to not one, but two elementary schools that we're not zoned for. Um, and we can hear the band and the bells of high school, and see the stadium lights of high school that we're not zoned for. And I just would like the board to, and I know zoning's not an easy task to do by any stretch of the imagination, um, but I would like the board to reconsider zoning to make schools the heart of the neighborhood, and not the thumb or the big toe. Um, because it, I mean, it just seems like we would like schools to be the heart of the neighborhood, um, so we can go to schools that are closer to us and not necessarily further away. Thank you.
Before we close for the evening, Mark, do you have any comments that you wish to make?
Just, just one comment. And of course, I, I usually give announcements on Monday, but since this event is, is on Saturday, I wanted to make sure people were aware that our Human Resources Department will host a walk-in job fair at SciPark High School this Saturday, November 12th, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. Uh, so invite your friends and family, uh, who might be looking for a job opportunity to show up at SciPark, and you can see this flyer. And Debra, is this online?
It is.
Okay, it's everywhere. So-
Yes.
Anyone who's interested, Saturday, SciPark, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you.
And Mark, although we'll be talking about item 4A, since a patron opted to speak on it this evening, uh, is there a way for patrons to submit written comments on zoning?
Absolutely. There'll be a place on the website where, uh, not only the administration will receive comments, but the board will receive all comments also.
And, and I would guess, if you're going to make a comment, uh, it would be useful to, uh, be specific as to where you lived in, and if you were talking about proximity, uh, to be as specific as possible.
Absolutely. Yeah, the more, more specific, the better.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Before we move to closed session, I would like to thank everyone for being here tonight. And I would also like to thank those who are watching from home. I will now entertain a motion to move into closed session on item, on agenda item 3L. Do I have both of them? Uh, item 3K and 3L.
I so move.
Motion's been made.
A second.
Motion's been made and seconded. We are hereby adjourned, uh, and you're welcome to, uh, to stay here until we, we come out. But once we come out, all we do is we close the meeting. But you're welcome to stay if you wish. Thank you, everybody, for being here.